The eighth regular meeting of the Medford City Council will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Caviolo.
Present.
Counsel Falco.
Present.
Counsel Knight.
Present.
Vice President Longo Kern.
Present.
Counsel Marks.
Present.
Counsel Scott Pelley.
Present.
President Del Russo.
Present, with seven members present, none absent. Please join us in the salute of the flag. I. (inaudible). Sixteen, Mr. Counselor.
Just where we just came from the committee of the whole meeting and we reported out, Paper sixteen, was it oh-seven-nine?
Uh-huh. Oh-seventy-two.
Oh-seventy-two. If you could give a brief synopsis of that paper where we have a number of people that are here and then report the paper.
So, we're going to report that paper out of committee. There was a committee, the whole meeting held from six to seven-ish, in which the city council barely discussed Paper Number sixteen dash zero seventy-two. We had a lot of community input. It was a discussion of the paper which was offered last week by Counselor Marks. It had some suggestions for amendment that were voted out of committee. Those suggestions were, or amendments were, that the election of a seven-member municipal charter commission be changed to a nine-member municipal charter commission. That in the process of this review, that the commission be restricted to coming up with five changes or areas for recommendation of change in the charter. And that number five was stricken, if I'm correct. And we asked that, that, there was a-
Periodic review?
Periodic review be removed and left up to the committee. And that there be a request that in this process, that the Charter Review Committee be aided by outside experts in these affairs. So, we have that to be sent over and the recommendation that it be sent to the city solicitor for compiling of those aspects and redraft of this piece that we have before us to be sent back to us. So, that, do I have that substance, Counselor?
Absolutely.
So, we have the city solicitor who might want to say something.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Mark Rumley, City Solicitor, 50 Woodrow Avenue in Medford. And I thought that the committee of the whole meeting was very productive. I thanked the council for putting bookends on this so I know what I'd be drafting and that's very helpful. I would also say that I was talking to Jean Martin while you were deliberating at the committee of the whole and she said, "There's a miracle happening behind the rail." And so, I think that, I think there's some truth to that. I know that, I was with Mayor Burke when she met with Counselor Marks and talked about this resolution. I know that she'll be happy to see that this has moved along to the next level and I look forward to drafting this up for the council and let's see where it goes from here.
Very good.
Motion for approval?
So, and I think it was Mr. Miller in actually who was the miracle in the room because he brought us back on course. Yes. So, on the motion for approval by Counselor Marks-
Roll call vote, Mr. President.
And a roll call vote is requested. Mr. Clerk, if you would, call the roll.
Counsel Caviolo.
No.
Counsel Falco.
Yes.
Counsel Knight.
No.
Vice President Longo Kern.
Yes.
Counsel Marks.
Yes.
Counsel Scott Pelley.
Yes.
President Del Russo.
No. The vote of four in the affirmative, three in the negative. The motion passes. On the motion of Counselor Marks to revert back to the regular order of business, all those in favor, all those opposed. Does that constitute our discussion sixteen dash zero eighty-five or should we save that for the regular order?
(inaudible).
Yeah, well, we'll see what happens. So, sixteen dash zero seventy-seven, hearings. Locations of poles, attachments of fixtures and underground conduits, Medford, Massachusetts, City Clerk's office. You are hereby notified that by order of the city council, a public hearing will be given at the Howard F. Alden Memorial Auditorium, eighty-five George P. Hasid Drive, City Hall, Medford, Massachusetts at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, February twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen on a petition of National Grid of Andover for permission to locate poles and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Governor's Avenue, National Grid, beginning at a point approximately ten feet west of the central line of the intersection of Governor's Ave and continuing approximately five feet in a westwardly direction. National Grid to install five feet plus or minus one or three inches, a secondary conduct from existing manhole onto the property of twenty-eight Governor's Ave for new service to a residential home. Wherefore appraise that under due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together with sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Set poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith marked Governor's Ave, Medford, Number two-zero-nine-four-four-five-seven-zero, January sixth, two thousand and sixteen. Approved by the city engineer, no city-owned or private utilities or other structures are adversely impacted. National Grid shall ensure that all sewer, water and drain lines are marked prior to any excavation. Any disturbed concrete sidewalk panels shall be replaced in kind unless said panels are being replaced by the residence contractor. Asphalt must be replaced by asphalt. An as-built sketch must be delivered to the residence's contractor for incorporation into the overall as-built for the site. Before beginning work, contractor shall notify DigSafe and shall obtain applicable permits from the Engineering Division. The contractor shall utilize City of Medford regulations and standards for restoration as well as remove all debris related to its work approved by the Superintendent of Wires. Call seven-eight-one-three-nine-three-two-four-five for any accommodations, et cetera, et cetera. Edward P. Finn, City Clerk. I now open the public hearing. All those in favor, present yourself to the podium if you are in favor of this matter and state so.
Good evening. My name is John Jankowski. My address is one-seventy Medford Street in Malden, Mass. I'm representing National Grid. The petition that you have in front of you-
Are you in favor of this matter, sir?
I'm in favor.
Yes. Anybody else in favor? Anybody else in favor of this matter? Hearing and seeing none, I declare that portion of the meeting closed. Anybody in opposition to this matter before us? Those in opposition, please welcome yourself to the podium and state your case of opposition. Hearing and seeing none, I declare that portion of the meeting closed. Invite the petition before us for a description of this project. Mr. Grid.
My name is John Jankowski. The petition that you have in front of you, twenty-eight Governor's Ave, they're requested to upgrade their electrical service. It's a manhole and duct system in that area. The existing conduit is too small and the age is many years ago. So, we have to petition, we have to install conduit from a manhole in the sidewalk to the property line, to a handle on the property line. If you have any questions or concerns, I could answer them if you'd like.
Chair recognizes Counsel Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much and Mr. Jankowski, thank you for being here this evening. If, in looking at this petition for the public hearing, it says that the contractors utilize City of Medford regulations and standards for the restoration as well as the removal of all debris related to this work. And I'm hoping you can explain to me a little bit more about the process and how this works because now we have some construction that we've approved being performed by the grid that goes out two years or a year and sometimes the road isn't repaired in a condition that was exactly suitable to the neighbors in the neighborhood. And the process that I've been working with the gentleman, Mr. Carmody, would be that they do the best they can, let it set and then come back the next season. I'm by no means an engineer and not much of a construction worker either. So, I was hoping that you'd be willing to explain the process a little bit so that people can understand how it works because I have a number of requests from residents here in the community that aren't too happy with the product that's left out in front of the house. It's not an end result, but you know, still having to live with it now for an extended period of time, eight to thirteen months in some situations.
Well, in this situation right here, we're just going to dig up the just a sidewalk, not the asphalt on the road itself at all, just going to be five feet of the sidewalk itself. It's probably a cement sidewalk and we'll just repair it as, put it back on as possible.
Now, you're going to repair it with the same color cement, not asphalt cement or anything? I mean, we're seeing a lot of the sidewalk panels in the city getting replaced where you'll see cement, cement, then there'll be a black asphalt panel. Mr. President, I'd like to, actually, I won't attach it to this paper. I'll file a separate matter at our next meeting asking for the grid to report back to us as to the status of their inspections in the community. But at this point, I'd move for approval of the paper.
Counsel Scott Pelley.
Thank you, Mr. Jankowski. Thank you very much for being here this evening. Through you, Mr. President, just to, for clarification, that this is only going to affect one home, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, there's no need for notice anywhere else. I'm just curious. Thank you.
No, when we do the petition, we have to get the abiders, you know, that's all. Just that one house.
Thank you.
Awesome. On the motion for approval by Counselor Knight, as amended by Counselor Scott Pelley, Counsel Caviolo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Governor's Avenue is a very heavily traveled road in the city and usually when you guys fill the holes up, they tend to sink. I know, I request that within thirty days you come back and reevaluate, make sure the hole doesn't have to be refilled again, like I said, because that's a very heavily traveled road in the city of Medford and it gets more wear and tear than some of the other streets do. So, if in thirty days you can come back and reassess if it has to be refilled again or repaved, I appreciate that.
That's fine, yeah, just, it's a sidewalk, yes, that's fine, yep.
One of the best amendments I've heard in years. So, on the motion of approval by Counselor Knight, amended by Counselor Scott Pelley, as amended by Counselor Caviolo, all those in favor? All those opposed? Chair, congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience tonight. Motion, orders and resolutions, fifteen, sixteen dash zero eighty-five offered by President Del Russo. Be resolved that Paper sixteen dash zero seven-two regarding the creation of a charter commission through home rule petition for the November battle, be taken out of unfinished business for public forum discussion and input. Counselor Marks, we've disposed of this at discussion and public input in committee of the whole. Though there are many citizens, I don't want to obstruct anything, but the paper was taken out in committee of the whole, sent and, and we just ratified it to send it off to the city solicitors. So, in a sense, I don't know if procedurally we should discuss it. On the motion of Counsel Knight to receive and place on file, all those in favor? All those opposed? Sixteen dash zero eighty-six offered by Vice President Longo Kern. Be resolved that the City of Medford replace the roof to the Medford Public Library as soon as possible. Madam Vice President.
Thank you, President Del Russo. We discussed this last week, as of Monday of last week, there was buckets around the Medford Public Library with constant dripping. A number of the tiles are removed, so you have all the ventilation being exposed and that's just in the couple sections that I went into. I've since got emails that there are leaks in other sections of the library. I'm a little frustrated as I'm sure the rest of my colleagues are. The major leaks were reported in December. We asked the administration to do whatever it took as soon as possible to remedy those leaks in the Medford Public Library and to look into the future, either replacing the roof or getting a plan together so that it won't happen again. This is December, we're now into February, so we're talking about at least eight, if not nine, ten weeks ago, the Medford Public Library's roof was leaking. We still have major leaks in the roof. I question now if there is mold. I question now if we have a rot issue in one or multiple places in that roof. We did receive an update from the mayor and I appreciate that, but five thousand dollars, I guess, was put into the library roof to repair it. Obviously, that didn't work and I don't think what's going on is good enough. It sounds like they're submitting a proposal to perform an evaluation. I feel that that should have been done already. I feel like an evaluation and proposal should have already been submitted to the city two months ago. We have families, we have residents, we have senior citizens, we have business, I saw business owners in there in the library today when I went in. This is extremely unfortunate that we're not taking it more seriously and I appreciate, you know, we got an update and I appreciate that, you know, something's being done, but in my opinion, it's just not good enough. I would ask that we do this immediately. I think we asked that in December. I think each one of us spoke about this. This is obviously one of our priorities. We discuss that when we discuss our goals. This will come up tomorrow night when we meet with the mayor. But it's, what has been done has not been good enough and I'm just highly disappointed in the lack of change that has gone on with, especially since I've expected so much more. So, like I said, this is, now we're working on two mayors with the same leaks in the same roof and it's just not being fixed and I'm disappointed. So, I would respectfully ask that we get a new roof on that entire library as soon as possible. Because I think that's what our residents deserve, that's what the children's, who visit the children's section deserve, because that's obviously where I saw the major leaks last week after speaking about it nine weeks ago. This is a priority of the Medford City Council. It should be, it should be a priority of the entire city. We had forty-plus emails, maybe thirty to fifty people come to the council meeting last June, two thousand and fifteen, when the library was underfunded. Are we, are we saying now that we need to have an uproar from the citizenry? I don't think that's needed when you have a leaky roof that's ruining our, I mean, it's ruining the rugs. The rug was a mess. Are we talking, is there mold? I mean, do we need to have a mold evaluation now? So, I know my council colleagues will support this, but I just want to send a strong message that we can't continue to let our infrastructure fall apart while we create jobs and do a number of other things that we shouldn't be, you know, other ways that we're spending money and shouldn't be. We should be putting the money towards a roof.
Thank you. So, that the roof be replaced in its entirety offered by Counselor, of motion for approval by Vice President Longo Kern. Counsel Caviolo will share some good news regarding the library with us.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Counsel Longo Kern. I was in the library last week myself, I think also you were coming out as I were going in that day. And it was, it was a shame to see what it looked like and I think the roof should be fixed immediately. On the good news is, with the help of the mayor and I spoke with Mayor Burke, on March twenty-first, the Library Building Commission will make its first meeting to Medford to hopefully get the process going to discuss either renovations or some type of funding for the library to get it up and running to where it should be and up to the standard that the other hundred libraries in the city in this whole area have gotten over the last five years. So, hopefully, when they come, they'll make some recommendations on how to get this process started and how to get some funding for this library.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. I think as us, as we, we behind this rail are all aware, certain dollar figure, ten thousand dollars would require that the public bid process be kicked off. So, I think the first question that we need to ask the administration is whether or not a bid has actually been put out for the roof to see if in fact the ball is rolling. You know, we've all banged the table, we've all asked for the roof to be repaired. I think we're all on board that we want to see a new roof on the library. We don't want to see the library leaking. We want to see the library to be a sanctuary in the community. You know, I love quoting Solicitor Rumley when he, when he speaks of Dick Lee that says that the library is really the only city-owned building that people voluntarily go to. And, you know, people voluntarily go there because they want to utilize the resources that are in place and they want to do so in a fashion that's comfortable to them, Mr. President. So, you know, we put a resolution forward sometime in December. The roof was fixed, five thousand dollars was spent to do that. In February, Counsel Caviolo put a resolution forward asking for some updates. The update said that, you know, the building commissioner has actually met with an engineer and performed an evaluation and a cost proposal for repairs and roof replacement is forthcoming. So, Mr. President, I think it's important that we find out exactly where in the process this is because I know that the public bid process is somewhat cumbersome and I know that the Baker administration has put forward some proposals to streamline the way that municipalities can purchase, which Ms. Miller isn't supportive after speaking with her and she's actually wrote some testimony and spoken at the public hearings on that. So, with that being said, Mr. President, I'd ask that the administration report back to us as to the status of the repairs, as to whether or not RFP has been issued to actually go in there and put a new roof on the building.
Point of information. Vice President Longo Kern.
I read the letter update from February twelfth a little differently because it, I would, I would state that no bid has been requested because it said the onsite inspection with an engineer was done this past week and that engineer will be submitting a proposal to perform an evaluation. So, we haven't even had an engineer to the library to perform an evaluation. I just feel that that's something that should have been done eight weeks ago and obviously five thousand dollars did not repair it as the leaks are all over the place.
Thank you. So, on the motion for approval by Vice President Longo Kern, as amended by Counselor Knight, Counsel Falco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank my colleague for bringing up this resolution tonight. It's very important. The library is one of our most important buildings in our city and like I said, I went to a fundraiser there a few weeks ago and it was rather depressing. I mean, here we are, there's I think over a hundred people there and there were buckets and ceiling tiles missing and it was really just a sad state of affairs. But back when the library director came back, I think it was the first or second meeting of the year, she came before us and they had offered an amendment to the resolution to give us a report on the overall health of the Medford Public Library, the building in total, so more than just the roof, but the whole building. And we still haven't received that and I'd like to, if we could check with the administration to see when we're going to receive that report because I think we need to look at the roof, that's important, but we really need to look at the whole entire structure to see, you know, what kind of physical health it's in. So, if we could get that report, I greatly appreciate it.
And further amended by Counsel Falco that-
Thank you.
-the administration report back to the council regarding the aforementioned report requested on the overall physical health of the library. Chair recognizes Counsel Scott Pelley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo my colleagues' sentiments, but again, I also talk about what Counsel Falco mentioned in understanding that what has been going on for years, as Counsel Longo Kern says, that the building is frightened to understand what else is wrong with it. I don't know, I made the, the suggestion that we look at other avenues and thinking of Twenty-First Century Libraries and thinking of something like Spring Step and, and doing that and I think that, you know, as we look into growth in our community and thinking outside the box, I understand the frustration that, you know, I saw, I saw the pictures of the, the kids on Facebook with an umbrella, I thought that was cute, but I think it's, it's dangerous. What now is underneath that is what I feel. It's scarier than just the drips. So, I think we need to get a, the more in-depth report back to us because its air quality is now questioned, I think, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Welcome, my neighbor. Please state your name and address for the record.
Louise Dantonio, Forty-one Dartmouth Street, Medford, Mass. I believe it's going to be a two-step process. The staff at the library to be commended, they've worked under very difficult conditions and the health and the safety of both the staff and the people who go to the library is important. Long-range, I envision a second floor on top of the roof that can be used as a resource for senior citizens, for meetings and so forth. That's an expenditure and I realize that. And I'm just tossing around ideas and I'm wondering if our very good neighbor, Tufts University, under quote, could not contribute something to the Medford City Library. They use a lot of space in Medford. They have resources that are available in Medford to the people of Medford Hillside. They're a bane to their existence and it would be nice if they came forward and offered some of the money that they have sitting in their accounts to improve vital facility in Medford. The other thing I was thinking about and I don't know the legality of it, Comcast, we have a fund with Comcast, we don't have a cable station right now. Could some of that money be used towards the library and have perhaps a cable station in a portion of the library that was rebuilt? So, I, I think we need to do something about the library, even though we're in a very computer-oriented society. It's nice to go someplace, especially for people who are older like myself, to sit down, to read a magazine that I might want, not want to subscribe to, to look at the books just for socialization. And I know in Watertown and other places, they serve coffee, so people that, you know, want to be in communication with others and don't have the opportunity because they live alone, have an opportunity to go someplace that's safe and that's comfortable. So, I think we need something done to the library. An immediate fix, yes, but long-range, something should be done to that facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Louise. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Frank O'Leary, eighty-five Rollington Street, West Medford. I'd like to say thank you to Counsel Longo Kern for bringing this up again and that was, that was here for the meeting when everybody agreed that the library was a priority, is a priority. On top of the, your roof issue, isn't the city liable if somebody trips and falls over a bucket or if somebody who's handicapped can't access something because there's a leak and too much water dripping down? You know, I'm not a meteorologist or anything, but this is New England. You know, wait a minute, the weather will change. We will get more rain. We will get more snow. It will pile up on that roof and there will be more damage. Now, just from walking in the back door, you see that the library does a lot more things than just, you know, rent out, have books go out and DVDs and CDs. There are small children doing Legos. There are small children doing Mindstorm. You know, there's other crafts going on. If anything says that this is a priority that needs to be dealt with, then the children are the priority. You know, God forbid something happens or some child goes in there who's severely allergic to mold. Now, you've got even more issues because you have sick children on your hands. You know, there was said that this was a priority and the roof would be taken care of. It's a shame that the reports haven't come through that need to be, need to happen, but maybe there is some pressure that can be exerted to make this move along and it's great that we have the meeting, March twenty-first, coming up, but as the council said, it's already been two months. Another month, we could, March could be, this year's February from last year. That roof won't last.
Can't be, full showers.
Exactly, and everything else. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counsel Caviolo.
Thank you. Everything Mrs. Dantonio brought up, you've been to all the other libraries in the area, all those other libraries have gotten funds from this Library Building Commission. Winchester, Everett, Malden, we're the only library in the, in the whole area that hasn't gotten any funds and hopefully this will be our chance. Maybe they, they may even suggest that we get a whole brand-new library. I mean, they'll, they'll come down with the commission and hopefully they'll make some recommendations that'll be very beneficial to us.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Vice President.
Thank you, President Del Russo. Thank you, Counsel Caviolo, for, I know you've discussed it with the commission and it's great that they're coming down March twenty-first. My, my only reservation to- My only reservation to that is if they're going to be helping us get a grant, will they have reservations with the fact that we don't maintain our structures?
Well, they may decide that the building, you know, may need a whole new building. I mean, I don't know what the criteria is. They're going to come down, discuss the criteria to get money and what it takes, you know, to go and build.
Because if I was one issuing a grant and I knew there was leaks in the roof for, at that point, it would be three months.
I agree.
I'd be hesitant to give a grant to a city that isn't going to maintain their structures.
You are, you're 100% right. Our history of maintaining municipal buildings is not the best.
And I just, my last point would be, I hope we don't wait for what happened with the Department of Public Works building where we waited for the roof to cave in before we did something about it. Like the gentleman said, we have people of all ages all the time traversing that library. So, I really hope that we do something to make a permanent fix for a little bit more than $5,000 on that roof.
Thank you. Counselor Max.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think, you know, year after year, we meet with each individual department head. So, that means the director of the public library came before us year after year after year with his budget recommendations. And I, as one member of the council, never heard the director mention anything about leaks in the roof or need to look at the roof that was done 25 years ago. And that's part of the problem, that, you know, department heads, when they come before this council, under the old administration, were told not to say anything. If there's a problem, don't vent your dirty laundry, just let it go by the wayside. And for years, there's been a lack of maintenance budget. So, that coupled with the fact that department heads wouldn't speak frankly when they came before us for budget, the one time you'd want to sit down and say, you know what, we need X, Y, and Z, that's the time to do it. And there was a gag order for many years in this community and I hope that changes, Mr. President. The other issue is that we don't have a long-term capital improvement plan, although we had one some years back, one currently doesn't exist. And when you look at all of our structures, go up to high school, there's more barrels up to high school catching rain than in the library. And they have a much larger roof in the high school, but this is systematic throughout all of our buildings in the community. And it's just a lack of maintenance, it's a lack of oversight. And, you know, I'm not quite sure what it's going to take in order for this city to wake up and maybe it's going to be this budget with a new council. When we go through the line items and you see a maintenance budget of $750, think about your home. What is your maintenance budget in the course of the year? Then think about a public building like the library that has 40,000 people that go through it in the course of the year and see if the $750 is adequate enough for a maintenance budget. So, those are the type of questions I think we have to ask, Mr. President, when we're sitting in budget. And yeah, that's the first account to get cut, I understand. It's the easiest account to cut, but it's the most important because what you're seeing now is everything that's been neglected in years, all coming up. Our fire stations are all in deplorable condition. You know, look at the DPW yard. It had to get condemned, they had to condemn it in order to build another building. The police department, same condition. City Hall, the roof is leaking in here, too. I mean, it's all over. It's, you know, it's a shame, Mr. President, and I agree. The only problem is if we spend $350,000 on a brand-new roof and then in six months from now, we decide that we want to add, expand the second layer on the second floor of the library, then that money went to waste. So, I think we have to have more of a vision and I would like to see the footprint of the library expanded. I think it could be used for so many other things. I like the fact that there's been talk about possibly having more of a gathering place, maybe have an area where you can buy a coffee in the scone and sit down there, read the paper like they do at many bookstores. And, you know, it could be used for so many more things and, you know, I hope, Mr. President, I know we're meeting with the mayor tomorrow night, that this be put on the priority list because the building served us well for many, many years and now it's asking for some repair or a total renovation. And, you know, we were able to get the public bathrooms done through this council and it wasn't until this council spoke up and said, you know what, those bathrooms in the library are deplorable, that finally, the last administration put $10,000 in the budget and they're still in tough shape, the bathrooms. They're really still in really bad shape there. So, I would ask, Mr. President, that at least at tomorrow night's meeting, that this subject be brought up again for a long-term capital improvement plan.
Absolutely. If there was one thing where you were all in agreement with, at our committee of the whole meeting where we discussed these matters, was the library. So, that's good. Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. Counselor Max brings up a number of great points and it got me thinking about, you know, the state of the library and what exactly it looks like. And we all received an email, I believe, over the last week regarding the Henry Putnam Memorial that sits out in front of the library where the old play structure used to be closest to City Hall. And gentleman came up from Pennsylvania and he came up with his wife and his wife's seventh great-grandfather, I believe, fought in the Revolutionary War and his name is on that monument. So, every time they come to Medford, they feel an obligation, every time they come to Massachusetts, they feel an obligation to come to Medford to see the memorial and they were very disappointed at the status and state of disrepair of the memorial as well as the library, Mr. President. So, I'd ask that the administration also take a look at maybe a power wash of the Henry Putnam Memorial over there. You know, in reading the history, it's a pretty interesting story. The gentleman fought at the Battle of Monotmy over in Arlington and he also was a Revolutionary War soldier and war hero, Mr. President. So, I think it's very important that we preserve that tradition and that culture here in our community. Also, in the research that I've done, it's my understanding that in order for the library to remain eligible for library funding and grant funding and to retain its accreditation and to not require an accreditation waiver, funding needs to be increased by about 2.5% over the previous year's appropriation, Mr. President. So, that means that the funding in the library budget for next year would have to be 2.5% higher than it was this year. And I think that it might make sense for this council, since we are seriously concerned about the status of the library and the future of the library, that we would make a request to the mayor that she include this figure in the next budget.
So, on the motion for approval by Vice President Longo Kern, as amended by Counselors Knight, Falco, and again by Counselor Knight, ma'am, you wish to speak on this matter?
Yes. This is really exciting to hear this discussion about the library. I was there a few weeks ago with Kason Roderio, who's, I think, almost three years old. And it was very difficult running between the buckets and the longer we stayed there, more children came. And it was really, I really felt really embarrassing to me to see the mothers there with their young children and, you know, having to watch where they walked instead of being comfortable in the library. And I love Louise's idea that, I've been to the senior center in Walden, it's absolutely beautiful, they have an atrium and plants and you can look up to the sky. And I think that would be a wonderful idea to perhaps ask Tufts University if they're interested in contributing to the city of Medford. And they could even, perhaps even run courses there. There's just so many different things we could do to collaborate with a wonderful college that we have in our town. And I just forgot what else I was going to say. All right, I forgot. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I didn't say my name, Valerie Geisler.
Well said. So, on the motion for approval, all those in favor, as amended, all those opposed. Roll call has been requested. Mr. Clark, if you would, please call the roll. Counselor Caviolo.
Yes.
Counselor Falco.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Vice President Longo Kern.
Yes.
Counselor Max.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
President Del Russo. Yes, with a vote of seven, the affirmative, none and the negative, the motion passes. 16-087, offered by Vice President Longo Kern, be it resolved that parking on sidewalks be better enforced. I care to point out to you, Madam Vice President, that we've spoken about this matter twice over the past couple of weeks.
Thank you, President Del Russo. I wanted to bring this up again because I feel that the, I'm bringing it up again because obviously, I don't live on the three or four roads where I'm getting the complaints. So, there's a number of people that have contacted me through email and phone calls with regards to no resolve from any type of enforcement that I believe, you know, should be taking place. Winthrop and George, I've been getting complaints on and obviously, we all get the complaints on Harvard and Main. We get pictures almost on a daily basis with regards to people trying to walk on the sidewalk and you have Mack trucks doing their business and pulling up onto the sidewalk, which I feel is very dangerous. And I feel like we do need to bring it up repeatedly. There's a number of things that I don't agree with, but with regards to, you know, how businesses run, but on the council floor, but I think if something needs to be brought up once or twice or three times, that's how we are able to get our constituents' voices heard and their concerns heard. Somebody's going to get hurt and it needs to be brought up again. We need to do something. I'm now getting emails where people are so frustrated that they're saying, this city doesn't care, the council doesn't care. And I have to like explain over and over again, we do, we continue to talk about it, we continue to make requests. A number of us have gone to the traffic commission, we've begged, no more than, no less than begged the chief of police to create enforcement. I've emailed the mayor, the mayor mentioned that she was going to meet with the chief to discuss it. Since then, you know, I'm not sure what was decided on, but if we could get an update on that, you know, what was decided on and if we could get some enforcement to create a level of safety for our residents, for people who, for all people, never mind the people that have, are in wheelchair or using strollers that just can't even fit on the sidewalk when there's a Mack truck with four or eight wheels on a public sidewalk. You know, I've been asked to bring it up again, I waited a few weeks in hopes that we would get some enforcement. Now, I'm getting emails from two residents on Harvard Street that can't even get out of their driveway. One woman, I believe, is carrying, is with child and she's scared to back out of her driveway because trucks are blocking her exit. You know, what more is it going to take to just get some enforcement? I know that the council has to have a meeting with regards to the bus stop and a loading zone and we definitely need to do that, but enforcement has to come first. And I don't know how many times I can say it, enforce, we lack enforcement and we need to have it done. I believe there's people that would like to speak, so I'm going to yield to the residents who, you know, have the concerns. But I think it's just such an important issue and it's a public safety issue. If we can't talk about it, you know, week after week, then I don't know what we're here for.
Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. This is a topic that I think we've all looked at, heard about, and discussed at one point or another since this term started. We've had resolutions that have gone to the administration requesting that we take the Donald Trump approach to Oasis and build a wall around it so that people can't park on the sidewalk. We've talked about increasing directed patrols down there. And the more I look into this, Mr. President, the more I examine what they do in other communities, one thing I've seen is that, you know, the majority of these 18-wheeler trucks, they're not going to pocket a residence to go in there and, you know, catch the baseball game. They're making deliveries, these are delivery trucks. And I think that we might be in a good position to restrict the hours, the delivery truck can actually make deliveries. And if we restrict those hours, then we can get these trucks off the sidewalks during periods of time when people are more frequently diversing them. It's certainly not going to resolve the situation at this point in time because without enforcement, restricted loading zones and restricting time to loading zones isn't going to work. However, we can create a structure in place, Mr. President, that has a fine structure so that if someone is delivering outside the hours of the loading zones, that loading is delineated or restricted, then we can hit them in the pocket where it hurts. Because that's the only thing that's going to make any of these businesses realize that it's beneficial for them to get a $20 ticket for parking on the sidewalk and drop off a $1,000 order. You know, it's a cost benefit, you know. I'm not going to park seven streets down and I think if we just put up a wall around Oasis or a wall around these areas where these problems with sidewalk parking is going on, it's only going to move this problem down the street further, but it's not going to actually address the problem. It's only going to take a small sample size in that area and just move it down the street, Mr. President. So, I think it might make a good idea and I would like to amend the paper to have the Community Development Office and the Traffic Commission take a look at some recommendations into restricting the delivery hours in our business districts. And I think that this will ease the burden on our frequently parked sidewalks.
And increasing fines.
And increasing fines.
And increasing fines, Mr. Clark. Chair recognizes Counselor Caviolo.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I get the same phone calls and emails that the vice president gets and, yeah, you know, I don't know what they tell these people anymore. Resolution, a resolution and change and we go to traffic commission meetings and nothing seems to get done. I don't know where to turn, we've called the mayor's office, we've gone to the chief. And let's say, there's not even like spot enforcement, there's like zero enforcement of these issues. Again, I don't know what the answer is anymore. And I say, when I get these calls and I get these things, I'm embarrassed, I don't know what to say anymore to these people. I feel helpless that, I've gone every avenue that I think we can go and nothing happens. No matter what we've done, nothing has happened there, whether it be the police zoning or anything. Again, I know we're going to be down there this week again and we'll see where that goes.
Counselor Max.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, maybe in these certain business districts, we have to go back to the old days where we had a cop on the beat and someone that would be in that area and actually see what's going on rather than just drive through the business district. But a couple of weeks ago, we voted to put temporary signs at the corner of Harvard and Main and while the ballads were being still reviewed going down Harvard and Main because of the 18-wheelers. And I talked to Chief Sacco today and he said it's up on the next traffic commission agenda and he sees no problem with the temporary signs right now. He also said that during the roll call every morning, that the officers are told to pay special attention to not just Harvard and Main, but many of the hotspots around the community that we as a council and neighbors have been talking about. So, he said they have stepped up the enforcement. But I really do believe that we have to get back to the old ways sometimes to address some of these concerns and having a cop on the beat in some of the business districts or having an officer on a bicycle getting around like they do in Cambridge and Boston is a much quicker way of traversing the area and I think it's a better approach to neighborhood policing and it would go a long way in our community in solving some of these issues.
That's the thing, community policing, Counselor, you're exactly right.
But the temporary signs are before the traffic commission at their next meeting.
And the chief reported to me that he personally exercised enforcement there in this past week. Counselor Caviolo.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, we keep talking about signs, I mean, that area's got more signs than anywhere in the city. There are, there's signs everywhere there, no parking, no stopping, no nothing, and everyone ignores the signs. What good is putting up more signs? I mean, we asked for some temporary barriers and what there or something, so...
I have so many signs around my house now.
That's right. Those streets have more signs than anywhere else in the whole city. What good is putting up another sign if no one's going to go there and enforce the rule? So, you can put up 100 signs and like Counselor Max says, if there's no policeman in the area, the sign is, it's just a waste of everyone's time.
Community policing works. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Shaw Rodriguez. I live at 281 Park Street, which is not in a business district. I feel like if it's in a business district, Republic should be raking it in, giving every truck that stops there a ticket. But I live on Park Street, which is the street that the Roberts Elementary School is on, which is the street where they let out the middle school kids off the bus. And they walk up Park Street and around the car that's been on the sidewalk since the first meeting that I came to about sidewalk parking. If that car's moved, I missed it. I walk my dog every day, twice a day, down that street. I walk my daughter to the park almost every day. That car is on the sidewalk, not on the park side, on the other side, and it hasn't moved. Nine and a half years I've been living on the street, nine and a half years that car's been on the sidewalk. Nine and a half years, he's never gotten a ticket. I'm not even sure he drives. He has a handicap placard up there and he hasn't moved. I met with the mayor about it three times, I met with Chief Sacco about it, I've called the police department and the police department at this point doesn't want to hear from me. When I call, they say, just walk on a different sidewalk. And I say, well, I can't because the other sidewalk is a parking platform. I need the car off the sidewalk. This is basic, write tickets, tow cars away, get them off the sidewalk. I don't want to witness a student walking to the elementary school, getting hit by a car. We have a parent who does Walking Wednesdays and they walk to school. We have a parent who does Walking Wednesdays, and they walk to school in little trains every Wednesday, and one of them's gonna get hit by a car. This is important, and someone needs to address this. Thank you.
Welcome, neighbor. Please state your name and address for the record.
Anita Dantonio, 14 Yale Street. This is deja vu all over again. I mean, we, there are great ideas coming from the City Council. Somewhere from here to what happens on the street, something gets lost, and there's nothing done, and there is no enforcement. That's the key. The business owner just feels free to allow the vendors to park wherever they wanna park, which is on the sidewalk. And these are big trailer trucks, they're not, they're not small cube trucks, although we have vans, we have trailer trucks. And what instigated me was watching a father and son trying to negotiate around a trailer truck on Harvard Street. Their alternative was to go into Harvard Street, and I said, "This is unacceptable." And the suggestion was made that the business owner should inform the vendors of what time these deliveries should be made. They can do that, they can say they need to be made before 9:00 in the morning, and perhaps then the truck can park, I'm not, I don't know if I've got this, the truck can park where the cars would usually park. It's going off and on, it must be me. Doesn't want me to speak anymore, I understand. But to have the trucks parked before the business patrons come on the scene and park their cars. There's got to be something done, we can't just leave it the way it is. You're gonna keep getting calls and emails and photographs, I mean, we have so much, we have volumes. Also, there are a lot of signs, and they rarely and truly just ignore the signs. The signs are ignored, we have resident parking, signs on Yale, they're regularly ignored. So I think it's up to the business owner and the vendors, his communication with them. I also think the police need to step up, and it would be a great idea to have community policing and have the officer walk the beat. But they need to be reminded that this is, they've got to share the sidewalk, it's not for trucks, it's for pedestrians. They've got to be a decent participant in the neighborhood in which they're doing business, and that's been lacking. So whatever can happen in terms of enforcement, I think is the first order of business, and making them understand. Speak to your vendors. Make them, they're not gonna arrive all at once, but they should arrive before a certain amount of time, and, I mean, there's got to be some onus put on the business owner here. He's really created a very uncomfortable situation in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So on the motion for approval by Vice President Lago Kern, as amended by Councilors Knight and Marks, all those in favor?
Read the amendments, please, make sure we have them all.
Mr. Clerk, please read the amendments.
From the mayor, an update on the conference, on the meeting with the mayor.
The meeting and the Chief of Police, okay, yep. And then the community policing by Councilor Marks, that we do some community policing in the area?
You want to increase...
Is that, you want that as amendment?
We want to increase.
And then restrict delivery trucks certain times, that the Traffic Commission look at that. And if I could ask a question while I have the microphone. Increase fines and restrict delivery trucks. I like that idea, especially in the problem areas. I just ask, are you thinking just in the problem areas, or are we talking about the whole city? Because we don't wanna create problems where there are...
I think if, Mr. President, we wanna protect the integrity and quality of life of our communities, we need to have a consistent policy that's applied even-handedly across our business districts. The problems that we see in South Medford Square, as it likes to be called, are significantly different from those that we see in West Medford Square. So, you know, I think that it's something that needs to be deliberated and discussed, and that's why I suggested that we get recommendations back from Community Development and the Traffic Commission, because what works for one might not work for another, and we heard that same situation when the parking enforcement plan was rolled out. What works in Haynes Square doesn't necessarily work in West Medford Square. So I think that we would be in a better position to rely on the recommendations of the Traffic Commission and the Community Development Office.
As Anita pointed out to us, there is no reason why the shopkeeper can't place a restriction on their vendors to say, "You want my business, you deliver between X and X these days of the week, and that's it." It works everywhere else.
So on that point, I just wanna make sure that's clarified in the minutes, that we ask the OCD and the Traffic Commission to restrict the delivery trucks and up the fines on, you know, as they decide from area to area.
And I think escalating fines, Mr. President, might be the way to do it. First offense, second offense, third offense, fourth offense, and they increase, you know...
Escalating fines, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Clerk, have that. Vice President, are you satisfied?
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. 16-088, offered by Councilor Falco. Whereas the City of Medford is experiencing various traffic and development issues throughout our city, be it resolved that the City of Medford hire a traffic engineer slash consultant to review the various traffic patterns throughout our city and design a traffic plan for the City of Medford. Councilor Falco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've only been on the council now for a short term, but I find that a majority, a majority of the phone calls that I receive and constituent emails all revolve around traffic problems and issues throughout our city. If you take a look around at our city, you see a number of developments both in our city and in surrounding cities that have had a significant impact on the traffic, traffic patterns throughout our city. I feel that we need someone that will review and make recommendations on our neighborhood traffic issues and coordinate traffic signals citywide to provide technical recommendations in major proposals in our city. If you take a look throughout our city, we have issues in South Medford, we have potential issues in North Medford with a possible redevelopment of the Mall and Hospital. If you take a look at the Ever Casino coming to town, there's gonna be issues with traffic congestion with regard to that. There's potential issues with the Wegmans Development, I'm sure, because there's gonna be a lot of cars down in that area. And, you know, if you look throughout our city, you know, you're hearing about condominiums and apartment buildings being built, and, you know, these are all going to have a fact on the traffic patterns throughout our city. I believe this is a crucial time, as our city continues to see an increase in the number of proposals from developers that wanna build apartment buildings and condominium buildings. I believe that these projects would dramatically alter traffic flow throughout our city, and we must act now, and I think that this is a good resolution, I think we need to get ahead of this with regards to planning, and as planning and development grows throughout our city, so I move approval.
Yes.
Councilor Cavie?
Thank you, Mr. President. For those who don't know, I'm the, I'm our city's representative to the Casino Mitigation Committee, and maybe at the next meeting, that'll be something I can suggest, maybe some funding can come from that group for, to help out with the engineer consultants. So I will, I will bring that up at the next mitigation committee meeting.
Thank you. On the motion for approval by Councilor Falco, Councilor Knight.
Yes, Mr. President, I certainly would be in support of the resolution. I think it's a good resolution for the city to hire a traffic engineer, this is something that came up throughout budget deliberations last year. We did have a debate about it on the council floor at some point in time last year also. However, that occurred after the budget process, so it would've been very difficult for us to add this new position to the budget. With that being said, Mr. President, I think it's very important for us to take a look at where we wanna put this traffic engineer, where we want them to work. Do we want them to work on the DPW? Do we want them to work on their engineering? What office do we wanna have them in, and also whether or not we know what the cost benefit, what the cost of traffic engineer would be. I think they run anywhere from $76,000 to $106,000, I think, with my understanding, doing some research, Mr. President. So I certainly support the resolution, you know, and I mean, I think if we wanna make this really become a reality, we might be able to get a little bit more information to the administration in order to put it through, so I'd be happy to work with the counselor through the subcommittee process, or through committee, the whole process, or just through legislative process to be sure that we get this done.
Awesome. So on the motion for approval by Councilor Falco, all those in favor? All those opposed? Carries, very good. 16-089, offered by Councilor Scarpelli. Be it resolved that the DPW report back to the City Council if they have a plan in place for porthole repairs for this upcoming season. Councilor Scarpelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that as we're coming along and the weather starts to shift, we hope that we start looking ahead and figuring out, and asking our director, acting director of DPW, to report back to us on a report, and what is in place for the multiple portholes that will be throughout our community, and get ahead of it before we are paying for new rims and tires through Mr. Rumbly's office. So I'm hoping that we can be proactive and make sure that we have a plan in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Cavie?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, as I've been to the MMA show, one of the things I found out is, I met a company called StreetScan. And what they do is, they go around and they assess the portholes for you in the streets, and they do it, they send a report to your city. In fact, on March 10th, they'll be doing a demonstration and a meeting up at Northeastern University in Burlington. So maybe if we could pass that information on to our DPW director, or someone like, or the mayor, they were, they do a lot of cities in this area, and they were, they said they contacted our city, but they had no, no response.
Right. So on the motion for approval by Councilor Scarpelli, as amended by Councilor Cavie, to send it to the DPW office for review, Councilor Scarpelli.
I'm sorry, hit the button by accident.
That's all right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 16-090, offered by Vice President Lago Kern. Be it resolved that the Medford City Council receive an update with regard to what has been done within the last two months to help expedite the permit process for those who want to open a new business in Medford. Vice President Lago Kern.
Thank you, President De La Russo. Just wanna get an update with regards to making it easier to open a business, whether it be a restaurant or non-restaurant type business in the City of Medford, because it's been, I don't know if we've ever updated the process or reviewed the process, and I believe it was something that was on the mayor's agenda, so I really hope that comes to fruition. It sparked my attention online, there was a video of, I believe it was the Chicken and Rice Guys who just opened recently, and I hear the food's great, but a video span of all the permits that the Chicken and Rice Guys had to get, I think it was about 17 permits, which took about six, six months. So I have quite, you know, what was it? 13 months. 13 months to open a restaurant in Medford, so I feel like that would be discouraging to a number, number of businesses. So request, maybe make an amendment that a pamphlet be made to, to make it easier, to make the process more understandable, and that something be done to expedite that. I don't know what can be done, but I know a number of inspections need to be had. I think we just need to make it easier to open a business and be more welcoming to people who wanna establish in Medford. That was shocking to see a video that long of permits, and I know people I'm actually close with that had a hard time opening businesses in Medford. So I just would like to be, figure out a way, and hopefully that that is on the agenda, and hopefully this has already taken place, but if we can get an update with regards to how we're gonna help expedite the permit process, make it more business-friendly, make our departments more business-friendly, so that it can be quite simpler and less time-consuming.
That's one of the primaries of discussion we've had in the transition team meetings, and I think there's a draft already under review.
So a draft, a draft pamphlet where somebody can say, "Okay, I need to A, B, and C, I need to apply for F now, so it doesn't take longer." Okay, great.
So a draft is being reviewed and tweaked.
Great. If we could get a copy of the draft, we could, through the chair, get a copy of the draft? That'd be great.
Yeah, so the clerk is meeting with the business liaison in the mayor's office during the week.
Councilor Cavie?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I went to the opening of Chicken and Rice Guys last week and talked with the owner, myself, and he explained to me, and told me that they had an easier time getting a license in the City of Boston and in the City of Medford. And he said that, you know, much easier, much more streamlined in Boston, they were also going over to Everett, and the Everett Town Hall is working with them, and it gets much easier. I came back, after I left there, I came over to City Hall and I went to the mayor's office, and I reached out to Annie Scro, I think that's the person, and to have her call me back, and I wanted to, and I said to him that I would bring her over there, but as of since Thursday, she's not reached back to me to go over there with him, to discuss the issues that he had, so a new business coming into town wouldn't have to face the same hurdles that he went through. So, Mr. President, I ask that Ms. Scro get back to me on the message from when I left there last week, to go over and meet with the Chicken and Rice Guy, so we can discuss the issues that he had, so businesses in the future won't have to go through the same thing.
So on the motion approval by Vice President Lago Kern, as amended by Vice President Lago Kern and Councilor Cavie, Councilor Knight.
Actually, Mr. President, it all came out in the discussion, I wanted to know what recommendations the transition team was receiving from the business community in terms of this process. However, through you to Councilor Cavie, did the gentleman at the Chicken and Rice, the Chicken and Rice Guy, I guess we can refer to him as, share with you where the, where the breakdown was, what department it came from? Did it come from the traffic plan? Did it come from licensing? Do you have any idea, Councilor, where exactly the delay was most significant?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any idea where the delay was most significant?
It was less significant. It was less, he said, the process was much easier.
No, no, but I'm saying, you know, it took 14 months, where was the delay in the process? There are a number of different departments that are involved.
It was in the, he said, he explained to me that every time he had got something, he had, he met a criteria, a new one would come up. He went and got a license, approved for something where he should've been over here first. He said it just, it was just a process that was crazy, and then, he said, it was one hurdle after another, and nobody was on the same page to help the guy out. So I hopefully, you know, that the new person, that's when new business comes down, this is where you go, and they can walk the person through that. But again, I offered to bring her over there, sit down with the gentleman, talk, and see what, what the issues were that he went through, so we can streamline it for the next person. And again, I haven't heard back from the office yet.
Move approval, Mr. President. On the motion for approval, seconded by Councilor Knight, Councilor Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, in my, in my opinion, anyone doing, or wanting to open up a business in this community, they should be assigned someone from the Office of Community Development that walks them through the process, that helps them get the licenses that they need. They should be assigned a person, not having them scramble around this city. I've been in the council 14 years, and I still don't know what half these offices in this building do, Mr. President. You come down into the main foyer of City Hall, the directory on the wall says you can go get your milk license in room 204, whatever it is. Milk licenses were done away with 65 years ago. So you have a directory downstairs that makes no sense at all on the wall. These are the type of things, the hurdles, if you wanna know what hurdles people are bumping into, just come into the building and try to figure out where to go in this building. Try to figure out who to contact, who to call. Why not have someone, why not promote the city and have someone that's gonna get out there and say, "Hi, I'm from the City of Medford, I'm gonna walk you through the process, I'm actually gonna file your licenses, I'm gonna do all the legwork for you." That way you won't see half the businesses in the square that have their lights out. Look at the square! You know, I used to debate this with Councilor Cavie, he said there were no vacancies in the square. I don't know if he'll still debate that anymore, but the whole square's vacant. The whole square's vacant, and it's because word gets out after a while, Mr. President. You know what? Business owners talk. The Chicken and Rice Guy talks to his friends, and they talk to their friends, and they say, "You know what? Do business anywhere but the City of Medford. Avoid the City of Medford, they'll put you through 13 months of torture to open up." 13 months of torture. I give the Chicken and Rice Guy a lot of credit for his stamina and wanting to stay with this community, but there are a lot of other businesses that would've just threw the towel and said, "The heck with them, I'll take my business somewhere else. The City of Medford doesn't wanna pursue us, I'll take it somewhere else." You know, we have to sell this community. We have to sell, we gotta get out there. The Office of Community Development gotta get out and sell this community. It doesn't happen, there's one person, and there's a part-time... It doesn't happen, there's one person, and there's a part-time person up there. You know, we don't want to get into this story over and over again, but that's what, you know, you want to point where the problem is, that's the problem, there's no one selling this community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So on the motion of approval by Vice President Longo Kern, seconded by Counselor Knight, as amended by Counselor Longo Kern and Counselor Cerviello, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion carries. Sixteen dash zero ninety-one, offered by Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, if I may, motion to suspend the rules?
On the motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of, Counselor?
I know that the clerk has several papers in hand as well, and in looking at the paper before me, we have some petitions and presentations for a couple of taxi operator licenses, and I think based on what I can see over your shoulder there, it might be in these gentlemen's best interest to get out of here and try to get home and battle that weather.
It is now snowing.
With that being said, Mr. President, I'd like to take Papers 16092 and 16093 up, so that the individuals in the audience at the opportunity to go home.
On the motion of Counselor Knight to take petitions, petitions, presentations, and similar matters, and papers in the hand of the clerk and under suspension, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed. Sixteen dash zero ninety-two, petition of taxi operator license by Hikam Hamdi of 158 Pearl Avenue, Revere. Sir, are you present? Is the petition a present?
Mr. President, motion to table this.
On the motion of Counselor Cerviello to table this, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion to table. Sixteen dash zero ninety-three, petition by taxi, for taxi operator license by Philippe M. Tovar of 20 Burgett Avenue, Number Two in Medford. Mr. Tovar, are you present?
Mr. President, motion to table.
On the motion to table by Counselor Cerviello, all those in favor, all those opposed. Two more things, we're coming to you, Madam Vice President. Under suspension, sixteen dash zero ninety-four, offered by Counselor Cerviello, be resolved that the Medford City Council request Republic parking revere or replace the meterhead at 451 High Street that has been broken down several times. Mr. Counselor Cerviello.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Republic Parking, having enough of a problem with the kiosks, now these are just plain single-head meters, with a few dozen that we have in the city. The one up on the store has been broken for about a week and a half now. They had a cover over it at 451 High Street. It was covered for about a week and a half, it took the cover off, and it was broken the next day. So you, I went in the other day to go to a Metchish Pizza, I bring a couple of quarters and go in there, does not take quarters, does not take change, must use a credit card.
All?
So I tried calling Republic, no answer, no, trying to work through the thing there. If we could have them get down there, either change the head, or fix it again.
On that motion, all those in favor? Mr. President? Counselor Knight?
I'd like to amend the paper and ask for a report back from Republic as to what their policy is regarding parking at a disabled meter, whether or not it's a ticketable offense, whether or not you're not supposed to park there, whether or not you're allowed to park there for free but for the two-hour limit. So what is the policy for parking at a broken meter?
What is the policy for Republic Parking, parking at a broken meter? Is it a ticketable offense? As amended by Counselor Knight, Counselor Cerviello?
I know I've asked for this report multiple times before, but I never received a report that we asked for for the parking. I know the newspaper got it, I never saw it in my package, I don't know, maybe, I don't know if the other councils got it in their package. I, you know, we asked this paper a long time ago.
Year-to-date, analysis of public, Republic Parking intake, types of fines.
The newspaper managed to have it, you know, and he's not even an elected official, and I, and we as elected officials don't have it.
As amended by Counselor Cerviello, Counselor Falco?
If we could have 2015 year-end, as opposed to year-to-date this year, I want to see the total.
So 2015.
January to December.
To the end of January to December, and year-to-date 2016.
That'd be perfect.
As amended, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Offered by Counselor Knight, be resolved that the fire chief updated the council regarding the status of the EMS service zone plan. Mr. Counselor?
Yes, Mr. President. Recently, it's been brought to my attention that the fire chief has submitted a service zone plan to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The service zone plan would delineate the proper operations for the deployment of emergency medical personnel in our community. I'd like to ask that the chief give us a report back as to the status of said report.
On that motion? All those in favor? All those opposed, motion carries. Chair recognizes Madam Vice President.
Thank you, President De La Russo. There is a resident who would like to say a few words, so just if we could allow her to speak, give us a little update.
Thank you. Valerie Geisel, Medford, Mass. This was a wonderful night at City Hall, attending the meeting of the committee of the whole, it was so exciting to see so much participation. Let's see. I like what Jean said, miracle is happening in Medford. And I like, thank you, Counselor Marks' famous phrase that, and we'll be seeing the creation of Medford, the Miracle City on the mystic. I like that phrase. Was that your?
Can't hear you.
Okay, is that better? Jean Martin said she thinks a miracle is happening here in Medford, and I like Counselor Marks' phrase that we may be seeing the creation of Medford, the Miracle City on the mystic. Is that her phrase? I like that phrase a lot. Let's see. Yeah, I'd like to say a few words about Oak Grove Cemetery. I wondered what's happening with the suggestion that we have an advisory committee discussed here by the city council, and I'm interested in the advisory committee addressing the issues of natural space for green burials, natural burials, and also creating an appeal process for decisions that are made, where there are sometimes requests is made and exceptions perhaps should be allowed. And I was going over the, some of the rules and the bylaws, and they're not all that easy for an ordinary citizen to understand. Counselor Marks did ask me if Mount Auburn Cemetery, that's a private cemetery in Cambridge, and also it's part of, part of it's in Watertown, if they have separate section, and I spoke with, a separate section for green burials. I spoke with Candace Curry, who is head of development there, and she said, yes, they have many separate sections. So they have graves where there could be six or more, ten separate graves that are somehow mixed in with the other graves, and they do it a special way, but they are what is called natural or green burials. And that's how they do it, they don't have one big section, they have many sections. And I wanted to give that answer to you, you asked that, I think it was two weeks Just recently, I read a quote by President Jimmy Carter, and he said, I'm sorry, my notes are a little bit mixed up. President Carter said, in a, it was quoted in a German newspaper, that we don't have a functioning democracy in America right now, in our wonderful republic. And I thought that was a pretty frightening statement by ex-president. Maybe, you know, this new process that we're developing here with the city council will be a good example for other communities that may feel some intimidation. I'd like to thank Michael Roderio for creating the movement of our charter review in Medford, and after so many years of waiting for this to happen. And, let's see, I'm sorry, my notes are a little bit mixed up. Some other comments that I wanted to make. A few years ago, our past mayor, Michael McGlynn, honored the Dalai Lama with a key to the city of Medford for his compassion and efforts to help humanity. And along, I was just thinking along those lines, that the cemetery, Oak Grove Cemetery Mission, in their own words, the mission statement says, "The mission of the cemetery division is to serve the citizens of Medford by meeting their needs with compassion and dignity. We will deliver services in a fair and impartial manner." And this is the mission statement that these people would be following. That's Stephen Brogan, Brogan, he's the manager and superintendent, and then the Board of Trustees, James McDebitt is the chair, Stacy Clayton, the vice chair, and then Susan D. is the third trustee. And so that's the mission statement of the cemetery. And I think if we follow through with an advisory committee, we could support the cemetery to follow this mission statement and fulfill obligations to the citizens of Medford. And I think that's about all in my notes. Thank you.
Through the chair to Valerie, I believe we haven't got a report back or anything from the mayor's office on the commission, but we did get an approval to ask the Board of Trustees and the Superintendent of Cemetery to report back on the number of requests they get per year on green burials. So I just haven't seen anything, I don't know if anybody else has with regards to the commission we requested, so maybe we can follow up on that. And then also, the clergy from, Medford Interfaith clergy is in support of the green burial, so I'm not sure if you've been in touch with them too, to maybe help your cause?
Yes.
Okay, because it sounds like they all sent us a letter into the cemetery Board of Trustees, so there are, you know, other groups that you can maybe work with to help your cause. I know you're on a timeframe issue, but hopefully you can get some help through this committee as well.
My understanding, the clergy is interested in green burials and having an advisory council and having other situations that would be related to cemetery matters dealt with, with the clergy. They also want to include other groups so that you don't have to be attending a church, and also funeral directors for their participation and advice. Yes, but I wondered, can the city council also be involved in that, so that it's a citywide endeavor?
Well, we can pass resolves, we can make recommendations, but I'm not sure. Yeah, Counselor Knight's right, I mean, the commission is, do you want to explain that further? That was perfect.
Boards and commissions fall under the purview of the mayor, the appointment power, they don't have to be approved by the council or any of that, so, you know, in terms of what the council can do, we can take legislative action or advisory action, but in terms of establishing, we can establish a board of commission, I'm sure. Whether or not we have the statutory authority from the state to do it regarding the cemetery or cemetery advisory committee is a different question that I'm not qualified to answer. However, the short answer to the question is no, at this point. Who's opposed?
I think a number of us that are concerned about green burials and conservation in the city, and there is a growing number of people now that we've been talking about it, are interested in seeing that the whole community of Medford could be involved in expressing their needs and their concerns, and to be able to have those needs addressed in a timely manner, and also if there's things in the bylaws that need to be changed, such as maybe things are going to be changed in the charter, with the charter review, that that would also be a consideration, so that everyone's needs could be understood and met in a timely manner.
Thank you very much. Good night. Counselor Marks?
Thank you, Mr. President. And unlike the Veterans Advisory Board, which Counselor Cerviello pushed for and was finally implemented by Mayor Burke recently, there is no state statute that governs, like Counselor Knight mentioned, governs the same process for cemetery boards to have an oversight body. However, we could, that does not preclude us as a legislative body to create that, and I think we're at about that point right now, and I see the interest from the clergy and other interested parties in the group, as well as in the city, as well as Valerie, that over the next couple of weeks, I am going to be offering a paper for the creation of an advisory board that will be the purview of this body through legislative action. And I think it's only appropriate that the matter be discussed, and whatever the decision is, whether this body feels that we can create a city ordinance or not, you know, that'll come out in the vetting process. But I think at this point, there's enough interest out in this community, and I don't see why personally the cemetery board wouldn't amend their rules and regulations to allow a certain portion of the cemetery, a small portion, to be used for green burials at this particular point. It's done in other surrounding cemeteries, and there doesn't seem to be a public health threat or risk, and, you know, as Valerie mentioned, that's a public cemetery, and we should be able to accommodate every one in this community. I may choose not to be buried that way, but someone else should have the right to do so after the process is thoroughly examined, and I think at the very least, Mr. President, I'm going to make sure that process happens.
I spoke with Black Rumbley, our city solicitor, and he said under mass general laws, there's nothing that prohibits this type of natural burial.
Right.
Thank you.
On the motion of Counselor Knight, that paper received and placed on file, all those in favor? All those opposed? Yes, Counselor Scarpelli?
I'm sorry, just a feel-good story.
No problem at all.
Through the, just a point of public information, this Friday night, probably one of the most selfless acts I've ever heard in my life, John Howard, a teacher at the St. Joseph's School, will be donating his kidney to a student that needs it. And to me, I think that is the most amazing situation, that gentleman is a hero. He stepped up on his own, from what I hear, went out, made sure he was compatible for what's needed for that fourth-grade child, and thank God it was, and on Friday night, they're having a big meet and greet at the Irish American at seven to eleven, and if anybody can make it, I think we should all go down there and give that gentleman a pat on the back and the recognition. It's Friday, this Friday night at the Irish American, kidney donor meet and greet, it's for John and Justin, all right? To raise money. The surgery's okay, I guess it's for other reasons, but I appreciate what John's doing, and he's a great person, he runs the drama spotlight productions, and my daughter Gianna, I want to thank John for giving her a solo. I've listened to a song for the last three months, but thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor. By way of information, while we're on the announcement portion, the Economic Development Transition Meeting schedule has been announced. Next week, Wednesday, in the City Hall chambers, on March 2nd, six to eight p.m., will be a public input session for business and economic development in, regarding Medford City, Medford Square, for the Hillside neighborhood, on the 9th of March, a Wednesday, six to eight p.m., at Number 574 Boston Avenue, Room 401, which is a Tufts facility, for West Medford Square on the 16th of March, Wednesday, at six to eight p.m., at the Brooks Elementary School, 388 High Street, and South Medford on the 23rd of March, six to eight p.m., in the Arthur De La Russo Community Room at the South Medford Fire Station. Finally, offered by Counselor Knight, sixteen dash, one more announcement, Counselor Knight.
Included in the packets this week, Mr. President, was a letter from Lauren Di Lorenzo, our Director of Community Development, and inside that letter is an advertisement for the request for proposals for public service funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program. The city of Medford is in their forty-second program year, it's going to run from July 1st, 2016, to June 30th, 2017, and residents can pick up an application and submit their proposals by March 4th to the Community Development Office. So... So, uh, it's gonna be a big year, I think, this year, Mr. President, and, um, I'm hoping that there are a number of organizations out there that are helping work to curb the opiate crisis for low and moderate income residents here in Medford that are going to hear this and are going to apply so that, uh, we can continue to get some help here in the community in combating the addiction crisis that we're facing.
Committee of the Hall, April 5th at 5:30 in the council chamber for the council room, office for that, and May 3rd, uh, uh, will be before us in the public hearing.
Also, Mr. President, is, uh...
The OCD director is reaching out to the, to new counselors, to, uh, to you on the process, Counselor?
Um, also, the Community Preservation Committee, um, will be meeting to discuss, uh, the structure of the Community Preservation Commission, um, on the heels of the voter approved Community Preservation Act, and we will be meeting on the 2nd in room 207 at 6:00 p.m.
While the, uh, economic and business, uh, event is happening here.
Yes.
Awesome. Counselor?
Uh, I, I believe I was left off that.
Uh, yeah, George.
Thank you. Solicitor Rumley became a non-voting member?
Right, George is on and we'll have to review that. Yes. Thank you. And, uh, 16 dash 091 offered by Counselor Knight, be resolved that the Medford City Council send its steep and sincere condolences to the family of Amabile Billy Rizzo on its recent passing. Mr. Rizzo, a distinguished member of the Carabinieri.
Yes, he was.
When he was a young man in Italy, and both of his sons are distinguished public servants.
Yes, they are, yes, they are. So, uh, Mr. President, uh, the, the Rizzos have been good friends of mine for a number of years, dating back to the early 90s. Tony and Gino were great kids and Mr. and Mrs. Rizzo were always very hospitable and welcoming, uh, you know, they had that type of home where you could walk down the street and the front door would open and someone would be yelling, you get in here, what do you want to eat? Um, they were great people, Billy was a, a wonderful guy, immigrated here from Sicily after serving as a member of Interpol, actually, and, um, you know, we had thousands of pictures to show you every time you saw him and, uh, he loved to kiss me and everything else, Mr. President, he's gonna be sadly missed. Um, and I'd like to extend my condolences and that of the council and the city of Medford to a longtime resident who was very civically engaged, um, who's going to be greatly missed.
Please join us in a moment of silence. The records, the meeting of February 16th, 2016, were passed to Counselor Caviallo. Mr. Counsel, how'd you find those?
Mr. President, I found a, uh, small error here. Um, on 16-072, at the bottom of the paper, it says, "Upon motion by Counselor Marks to be tabled," it should have been, uh, referred to Committee of the Hall. So if the clerk could make that, uh, uh, change, it would be appreciated.
Very good. Otherwise, you move for the approval?
Otherwise, uh, the papers are in order.
Very good. On the motion for approval, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion carries. On the motion for adjournment by Counselor Falco?
No, no meeting next Tuesday?
And there is no meeting because everybody must get out and vote.
Committee of the Hall tomorrow.
Okay, Committee of the Hall tomorrow.